Calling the meeting to order. Adequate notice of this regular and executive meeting setting forth time, date, and location has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act on January 10, 2022 by prominently posting a copy on the bulletin board in the lobby of the offices of the Board of Education, which is a public place reserved for such announcements, transmitting a copy of this notice to the record, the Wayne Today, Tap Into Wayne.net, the municipal clerk, and the district website. Approval to convening to start the meeting. Mr. Moffett, roll call, please.
Is there a motion and second?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. Bubba. Mr. Pavlak. Call roll. Mr. Bubba.
Here.
Mr. Fatale.
Here.
Mrs. Kumar.
Here.
Mr. Pavlak.
Here.
Mr. Prasakos.
Present.
Mrs. Putup.
Here.
And Mrs. Wintick.
Here.
At this time, we're going to do the flag salute followed by a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Dr. Toback.
Okay, so, good evening, everybody. This evening, we have much to discuss and share with the Board of Ed and with the community. We have many committee reports and our student reports, plus an important presentation about our budget, so I'll keep my comments brief. Yesterday, the school district launched a new initiative to gather more information from the community about the post-secondary planning process. We've heard from many parents and appreciate your ideas and feedback, and we're happy to report that we experienced an almost immediate and strong response from the community. We've been able to gather that families can use more assistance with the college admissions process and how to start planning early. It's apparent that the admissions process has become increasingly competitive, and it would be helpful for us to offer more parent workshops to navigate the various stages of the college process. Families also requested that we consider working parents and provide a flexible mix of in-person workshops and Zoom sessions throughout the school year. Many families expressed an interest in educating students about various career and trade opportunities early on so students can take advantage of more high school electives to gain exposure and awareness about different post-high school career options. Additionally, we recognize the need to educate our special education community about college programs that offer support services and accommodations to maximize student success. So we'll continue to read your comments and use this information to plan for our goals for next year. I'm also pleased to continue to be involved and support the annual community forum with Mayor Vergano and also with the Wayne Education Association, the Wayne Alliance, and our school resource officers. It's a fantastic annual event that makes a difference in the community. Focus of the event this year is teen mental health, and it will be held on May 24th. Additional details will be shared in the coming weeks. Of COVID update, the district continues to experience, unfortunately, a growth in the number of COVID cases, once again following the pattern before where the number of cases doubles every two weeks. So now we have 30 positive cases. Two weeks ago, we had 15. There is good news, though, in that the number of students quarantined has been reduced by about half. The other good news is that even though the number of cases are on the increase, this is nowhere near to anything we experienced earlier this year. Regarding the HIV report, I'm reporting the following data related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents in the Wayne Township public schools. There were four incidents of HIBs investigated since my last report. Two of those cases were deemed to meet the criteria of HIV incidence. That concludes my report.
Were we going to go over the budget information at this point?
I believe we have the student reports.
We'll do those first. Thank you. Ladies?
On Wednesday, March 2nd, the Wayne Hills High School Wellness Committee hosted their first Pets for Last Stress event. Pets from the Bright and Beautiful Therapy Dogs Organization visited the high school during the lunch block to offer the school community a much-needed break from the school day. The event was well-attended and brought joy to students and staff alike. Wayne Hills student Ruwan Austin won one gold medal for Vagabond and one silver medal for Stargazer Rocky Shores in the Scholastic Art and Writing National Competition for Poetry that won Gold Keys in the regional competition. Ruwan will represent Wayne Hills at Carnegie Hall on June 9th for a national awards ceremony. He was also chosen as a semifinalist nominee for the 2022 National Student Poets Program. Congratulations, Ruwan. The Wayne Hills Symphonic Band participated in the 2022 North Jersey School Music Association's Concert Band Festival on Tuesday, 3-22. The band earned a silver rating from the adjudicators and some valuable feedback on how to improve. The band did well in their role of musical ambassadors of Wayne Hills. The Wayne Hills Millennium Winter Guard won first place in the Scholastic Regional A Division at the Madison Guard Show on Saturday, 3-26. The guard's score improved over two points, and their program Everest is looking to reach the summit by championships. The Patriots hosted their crosstown rival Indians in the first of a two-game series in the Unified Basketball League. It was a come-from-behind, home-team win with Hills earning the victory, 33 over 28. Unified's sports team have both from general ed and special ed players combined on the same team and are supported by the NJSIAA and Special Olympics. Wayne Hills hosted the Passaic County Relays for Track and Field earlier in the month and had several students with personal records in addition to major team wins in the boys' javelin, distance medley relay, and a girls' four-by-1600. Patriots baseball brought home a big win, 3-0, over undefeated Ramsey High School's 7-0 record this past weekend. Kaitlyn Davies continues to be a major leader in the success of her Patriot Girls Lacrosse program, where she was recently recognized for a career 200 goals. Wayne Hills sent student leader representatives to a leadership through athletics conference and have brought back some great ideas for the coming leadership development program at Wayne Hills. Two of our coaches were recognized for successes in coaches by Passaic County: Greg Rayberger girls' soccer with 100 wins and Kathy Peters gymnastics with 50 ones. Our boys' lacrosse program brought home a big win after celebrating senior night against Kenon with a 5-2 win. Our unified track and field program is underway in collaboration with special services that will round out our offerings of unified bowling, basketball, esports, and track and field for the year, our first year with all four offerings for our unified program.
The National Honor Society is once again conducting its Kids Helping Kids program, which takes place weekly at the Wayne Public Library. With this longstanding program, the NHS students offer extra help and tutoring to elementary, middle, and high school students. On Monday, April 4th, the baseball team had their season opening game against Clifton. This year's baseball team has seven seniors, including David Rotocco and Drake Flower. They are looking forward to a bounce-back season after losing to Wayne Hills in the county semifinals last year. The boys start off their season with a challenging schedule facing Bergen Catholic, Randolph, and Ramapo to begin their 2022 season. We're all really excited to see how the team will do. Key players to watch out for are Sean Dubois, Andrew Christian, and Connor McNally. Girls' flag football kicked off their first-ever scrimmages at Nutley on Friday, April 4th. The team is not fully a sport yet at Wayne Valley, but represents itself as a club, so dual athletes can join and experience the new opportunity. The team consists of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and they started off their season with small scrimmages against teams in the league on April 3rd at MetLife Stadium. Valley is one of the eight newest teams in the league, and we wish them the best of luck in their games. The girls' golf team is looking promising this year with senior captains Amanda Voy and Maddie Martin leading a team with high expectations this year. The girls' golf team is 1-0, and they open their season with a 206-237 victory over Northern Highlands. Boys' lacrosse is 2-0 with wins over Mawal with a score of 8-7, and Lakeland 13-5. This team is led by Coach Glander, and he and his squad look to capitalize off of last year's county championship with another solid season. Leading the team this season is High Point University commit Colin Rover, Colin Schmitz, and their junior defense unit, which consists of Chloe Wolford, Jack Lavner, Paul Zoransky, and Matt Shapiro. After many seniors graduated in a season-ending injury to Danny Smith, the boys are going to have to look for some underclassmen to step up. Softball is 1-1 with a big 14-3 win against West Milford on Saturday, April 2nd. Key player Senior Gabby Perez leads the team this season. After unexpected 8-12 record last year for the boys' volleyball team, the only way to go is up. The squad's key players include juniors Andrew Teicher and Brandon Lechner. The boys' volleyball team is currently 0-1 with a tough opening day loss against Fairlawn. Good luck with the rest of the season, boys. Wayne Valley's SDA will be held on April 28th, 29th, and 30th. The two teams have been practicing for many months and are looking forward to the show. I can't wait to see what the incredible dances the girls come up with.
James Fallon PTO donated $180 to James Fallon Elementary School, and the donation is to be used for transportation of 5th grade students to James Row Memorial Pool on Wednesday, June 5th. The James Fallon PTO donated $2,000 to James Fallon Elementary School, and the donation is to be used for 5th grade field trip to Liberty Science Center on June 10th. Lafayette PTO donated $3,000 to Lafayette Elementary School, and the donation is to be used for K-5, K-5 field trip busing.
James Veale donated $1,000 to Skylar Colfax, and this is to be used for the metal flower sculpture. Dominic Del Antonio donated $3,200 for the 3D printers for CAD class to Wayne Hills High School. Wayne Education Foundation donated $3,600 to Wayne Hills High School, and this donation is to be used for renovations to the theater room. Wayne Education Association donated $1,401 to the Wayne Township Public Library, and this is used for books for each school library.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to a presentation on budget revisions.
Yes. Okay, so this evening, we have a presentation, and to participate fully, members of the public should use the pie chart we shared with the agenda this evening. So hopefully you have a pie chart. So you'll notice that there are numbers. These numbers will be used to call your attention to certain areas of this document. But to get started, Mr. Moffett will be providing a budget update along with some background information that will help with the discussion and will also help the public understand a little bit more about what we're talking about. Mr. Moffett?
Yes. Welcome to tonight's meeting and the discussion regarding possible budget revisions. The Board has recently been given opportunity to revisit the budget priorities due to the decision to move to the state of New Jersey Health Benefit Program. Some background related to this unique opportunity is that the Board, as part of the annual renewal process, went out with a request for proposal process, which was due back to be opened in my office on March 26th. There were no new benefit proposals presented, just a renewal from our existing carrier, Aetna, with an estimated 27% increase over last year's costs. This increase is contributed to our claims history and overall market factors, which includes the COVID pandemic. The Board, as recommended by the broker of record, approved the transition to the New Jersey State Health Employee Benefit Program. This transition was approved by the Board at their March 31st meeting. That transition will be effective, obviously, we'll start before that, but it'll be effective July 1, 2022, which is also the beginning of our new budget period, which is for the 2022-2023 budget year. At this time, the Board is also in the process of considering and approving the 2022-2023 district budget. The Board approved the tentative budget at their March 16th meeting. As an update, the submitted tentative budget was approved by the Passaic County Office, New Jersey Department of Education, and our user-friendly budget was advertised in the newspapers and related internet sites on April 13th. As per NJDOE regulations, since the final budget has not been adopted, and they would normally adopt a budget at the hearing, which is slated for the May 5th meeting, that's our next meeting, again, it's our budget hearing, the Board has an opportunity to change that budget, which presents this unique situation in time, which was brought forward by the employee health benefit change. The Board, through the Finance Committee and feedback from an administration, decided to revisit district priorities in the areas of reducing the reliance on budgeted general fund balance, property taxes, issues and conditions resulting from the COVID pandemic, and to continue to identify resources for school facility needs for today and into the future. As Dr. Toback suggested, there is a handout, and at this point, did you want to start with the pie chart?
Yeah, so at this point, I'm going to use the pie chart for reference. Okay, so if you want to take your pie chart. Okay, so I'm going to discuss items 1, 4, and 5 on the pie chart, and I'm going to do that because they are all connected. Mr. Moffett will be discussing the rest of the items. Okay, so we anticipated the first question might be, is any of this going to reduce taxes? So the answer is yes in multiple ways. So if you see number 1, that's just a straight tax levy reduction for the upcoming year. So part of our plan is to reduce the tax levy increase from what was originally scheduled to be a 2% increase to 1.5%, which adds up to approximately $800,000. So some of these numbers can change. They may not be exact numbers at the time that the final budget is adopted, but they're very close. Number 4 is interesting. It's a major victory for the Board, and it funds number 5. So in 2014, when I started, the district budgeted $3.5 million from the prior year's budget for future budgets, meaning that there was an assumption that each budget would produce in excess of $3.5 million in fund balance at the end of the year. So it's difficult in some years to produce any surplus, and the auditor cautioned against continuing this practice. So since that time, the Board chipped away at this number. So it's now down to $1.5 million, and now the Board has an opportunity to eliminate this problem. And the problem started in the early 2000s, when the district experienced severe financial strain. So that's sort of a response, but at this point, it's taken many years to get down to $1.5 million, and now the Board has the opportunity to eliminate this problem within our budget. Number 5 is also very important. So by eliminating number 4, it is likely additional funds will be available for capital reserve, which is number 5. By building our reserves, we've been able to move ahead with numerous projects, including most recently, new security cameras across the district, new security vestibules, new phone systems, roofing replacements, enhanced Wi-Fi, renovations to the ECC and the Preakness School, which paved the way for full-day kindergarten, new science labs at both of our high schools, backup generators, kitchen upgrades, HVAC enhancement, and also the strobe light external building alarms, the file and media center upgrades, the Ranald Carter Small Group Instruction spaces, and that's just since 2018. So the Board has really moved ahead in terms of facilities, and they've completed every one of these projects without seeking additional funds from taxpayers. By taking action on number 4 and continuing to build our reserves, we'll be able to fund, without a referendum, the bleacher replacement projects at each of our high schools, plus a new track for Wayne Hills, assuming our financial position remains strong. So that's really quite a testament to long-term planning by the Board of Ed and also a commitment to build your reserves, and that really, at this point, it has really paid off for the district and at no additional cost to taxpayers. It's all done within the district's budget.
And I'll continue around the pie chart, and I'll start with number 7, which is budget restoration. During the budget process, many of our district needs and wants are under addressed, as the administration has to prioritize and build the budget within a 2% cap. In other words, administration balances wants and needs and, at the same time, projects into the future, 2, 3, 5 years out. It's not an easy task when you consider continued and consistent salary growth beyond 2% tax increases over time and into the future. These are areas that we'd like to build resources back into the budget, and as you can see, it's for various technology subscriptions for administrative and instructional uses, expand student support services and programs to address anticipated needs resulting from COVID pandemics, both generally and for IEP-driven needs. It's also going to be used to restore an English-language learner/teacher to expand the district's program. Number 6, various federal grants have assisted the district in managing the pandemic's impact on the delivery of instruction and school operations across the Board. A downside of these grants is that they present a budget cliff, which means when the money runs out and the needs continue, the Board will have to absorb these various services and/or programs into its operating budget. Additional needs continue to be identified, since the budget was crafted, and these areas include, one critical area I'll note, is an emotional mental health services for our students. This will help us expand our counseling program by hiring additional guidance counselors. We see a continued need for paraprofessionals to support our special needs population. We also expect to continue to address behavior and disciplinary issues at the elementary level. Number 2, increased utility and fuel costs. You see there, since the creation of the budget, again, this is a very fluid situation, as we all may know, we have seen an unstable oil and energy markets, which, along with the pandemic, have hit this year's budget hard. That's this year, and will continue to be, have an impact, and what I would anticipate a negative impact, moving forward due to the ongoing war in the Ukraine. We are currently adjusting this year's budget and continue to project for next year's needs. Number 3, which is employee retention recruitment for the teacher shortage. Anyone watching or reading the news is aware of a general worker shortages across various areas in our economy. This shortage stretches into hiring and retention of teachers, bus drivers, and many other areas within our school operations. We expect an increasingly competitive market for attracting new employees and are increasingly concerned about keeping all of our valued employees. At the same time, we need to continue to provide support, such as substitute teachers and additional coverages, as we continue to attract employees with competitive salaries and high-quality employee benefits programs. And I think that handles most of what's on the slide. I will go into what are the next steps for the Board. The Board of Education may consider this recommendation at the next budget hearing, which again is May 5, at which we will again inform the general public of these subject changes. So what does that mean? Since the budget has been advertised, there's a change, so I have to document that change. So you'll be seeing some information as it relates to the local tax levy, plus the budgeted fund balance, which each equals about $2.3 million. We'll reduce those lines in the budget and will also offset it by reducing the lines on the appropriation side in the total personal services area. This change, again, will be presented, and after the budget hearing, an amendment will be added to the resolution to adopt the district's 2022-2023 budget the Board will consider, and if approved, these subject budget changes will be forwarded to the Passaic County Office and JDOE for final approval. If approved by the county office, the budget will then open the district budget as adopted for general district purposes. That concludes my report on the presentation.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Moffett, revisions to agenda items, please.
Okay, back to me, and we do have 2 tonight. Under the regular section, which is M. Human Resources, item number 5, which is approval of additional hours and minutes. We will be revise start date with item number 1, under 5, the start date from March 22, 2022 to April 22, 2022, and additional hours to be 2:16 a day. And moving on to the emergent section, Section T, we will be adding T-11, which is approval of increment withholding, and that recommendation reads as follows: "Resolve that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, withholds the employment and adjustment increment for employee number 4171 for the 2022-2023 school year for good cause, and directs the Board Secretary to provide the affected staff member with written notice of this action and the reasons therefore within 10 days in accordance with NJSA 18A colon 29-14." And that concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you. The next portion is open to the public to address agenda items only. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to 3 minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The Board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the Board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under Old Business. May I have a...
Move to open.
Mrs. Kumar?
Second.
Mr. Pavlak?
Madam President, seeing no one rise, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
We have some retirements to celebrate this evening. Mr. Fatale?
Mrs. Randy Korch has been a Spanish teacher at Anthony Wayne Middle School since fall 2009 after working as a world language teacher at Wayne Valley High School. As a member of the school community at Anthony Wayne, she has taught four Mark and Period Cycle classes of Spanish for grades 6, 7, and 8 for many years, getting to know the large majority of our students. Included in her courses have been conversational content, vocabulary, and grammar, as well as cultural and lifestyle content associated with Spanish-speaking countries. Mrs. Korch always worked to give her students a well-rounded experience. She also served as advisor of the Anthony Wayne Sewing Club for a number of years. Mrs. Korch has been a trusted and loyal colleague to many over the years, and has always been an example of professionalism, consistency, and kindness. Her many years of service and dedication to Anthony Wayne Middle School are appreciated, and we all wish her well in her upcoming retirement. It is time for her to spend some quality time with her husband and daughter.
Thank you. Mr. Pavlak?
Walter Johnson. We're celebrating the career of Mr. Walter Johnson as he plans his retirement for July of 2022. Walter has been working in the Wayne School District for 39 years. His devotion to Wayne and the students of Wayne is broad-reaching, as his contributions have touched the lives of many, and is felt both at Wayne Hills High School, Wayne Valley High School, as well as George Washington Middle School and Skylar Colfax Middle School. From 1982, Mr. Johnson was an integral part of the coaching teams at both Wayne Valley and Wayne Hills High Schools, as well as the athletic site manager at Hills from 2016 till now. His long list of accomplishments include 15 state championship awards, 13 in football, 1 in basketball, and 1 in track and field. His combined coaching between the two high schools is 34 years from 1982 to 2016, an achievement unparalleled and a testament of Walt's loyalty to his kids, and would not have been possible without Mr. Johnson's dedication and commitment to his players. His teaching career spans multiple schools, starting at Wayne Valley in 1983, then George Washington Middle School in 1984, and then finally at Skylar Colfax in 1985 until today. Mr. Johnson fondly refers to Skylar as the best-kept secret. He is the backbone of the PhysEd department and is responsible for evolutions of physical education and health programs at Skylar. Mr. Johnson sees Skylar as his home and family, which is evident in the relationship he has both with staff and students. You always know you can expect consistency from Walter from the beginning of the day as he carries his lunch and diet Snapple down the hallway to the end of the day when he waves goodbye to the office crew on his way to Hills High School. His favorite memories include the Washington, DC trips, faculty 8th-grade basketball games, and PE field days. When asked about his time in Wayne, Walt said, "I feel lucky to work at Skylar Colfax with an outstanding staff and PE department." Walter's booming voice will be embedded in the walls of Skylar for many years. He will be missed every day and though about often. We wish Walter all the health and happiness and joy as he begins this new chapter in his life with travel and his future. Congratulations, Walter, on an incredible career, and thank you for your unending support of our Wayne students. Just on a personal note, I have known Mr. Johnson all those years. I worked with him at the Wayne PAL Day Camp. I worked with him at the Wayne PAL Day Camp. We went to college together and we, you know, we see each other from time to time. And you talk about the model you want for a teacher. Walter Johnson is that model. Good luck, Walt.
Thank you. Mr. Prasakos?
Linda Greenberg. After 16 years with the Wayne School District and 35 in education, Ms. Linda Greenberg will be retiring as a teacher of French. Her commitment to the students of Wayne Hills and Skyler Colfax truly embodied her motto that learning a language should be both educational and fun. From constructing the Eiffel Tower out of candy to learning to make crepes, her students were afforded a variety of ways to embrace French language and culture. Her work spanned all five levels of French, from beginners to honors, and each year she worked to bring in new technologies and activities to enhance learning. She was also the advisor to the French Honor Society and the French Club, through which she organized trips to museums, restaurants, cooking schools, and Broadway shows. Ms. Greenberg took every opportunity to enhance her students' learning experience, including bringing in former students who were living abroad in France as guest speakers through video chats. It is thanks to her hard work and dedication that the French program is thriving. Her future plans include living up to being voted Wayne Hills Most Travel Teacher by continuing to do so in her retirement. We thank her for her service and know that she will be missed by staff and students of Wayne Hills.
Mr. Bubba?
Annette Avolio. Ms. Annette Avolio has been a member of Anthony Wayne Middle School since it opened in 2005. She has been a loyal and trusted colleague to many during her tenure here in Wayne Township Schools and has been a role model of patience and kindness for her students as well. More than just a language arts teacher, Ms. Avolio has served as a student council advisor for many years. In this role, she has helped develop leaders within our student body through activities like the annual Patterson Fire Department Toy Drive. Ms. Avolio also served on the Anthony Wayne Middle School community as the chair of the Sunshine Committee. All happy and sad occasions for staff, staff members have been acknowledged for many years to thank her for ongoing thoughtfulness and caring nature. A mother and a grandmother, first and foremost, Ms. Avolio has more than earned a long and happy retirement as she embarks on her next phase of life. We thank her for her many years of service and commitment to the children of Wayne and wish her nothing but the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will come back.
Okay, we have one more retirement, we will come back for that one. Sorry about that. Thank you. We also have some committee reports this evening.
You coming back for Mr. Olenbach?
Oh, no, I'm coming to you now. The one that Mr. Bubba was supposed to read, we'll come back to. Thank you. Dr. Toback? Yeah, yes, thank you.
Okay, right. So it is an honor for me to read this retirement statement written by Assistant Principal Lisa Ernie, who works with Dave Olenbach. So it's an honor to celebrate the amazing career of Dave Olenbach, the principal of Anthony Wayne, as he plans on retiring August 1, 2022. Dave has made an everlasting impact on the Anthony Wayne community. They started off his nine-year teaching career at the Randolph Public Schools in 1995 as an elementary band teacher. After a year, he became the middle school band director for four years before moving to Randolph High School to be the high school band director. He then became a teaching supervisor for the Visual and Performing Arts at Randolph High School. Seven years later, he was promoted to high school vice principal for two years, and then in 2013, Dave decided to forge a new path in his career by becoming the principal at Anthony Wayne Middle School, where he's finishing his incredible career in education. From the moment he stepped into Anthony Wayne, Dave has impacted the lives of all those who have come in contact with him. He's been known to say, "Education is about relationships." Dave has built such positive relationships with students, parents, staff, and fellow administrators. Before his first day at Anthony Wayne, he studied the previous year's yearbook so he could learn every staff member's name and face. He also spent those first few weeks meeting with staff members so he can get to know them as people and not just teachers. Everyone knew instantly that he was the right person to lead Anthony Wayne. Dave does so many things well on a daily basis. He's always the first to arrive, working in his office before school starts, so that he can spend most of his day with the staff and students throughout the building. You can always find Dave in the halls, spending lunch periods in the cafeteria, visiting classrooms, giving students high fives, and engaging in conversations. His office door is always open, and even if he is busy, he always has a minute for anyone in need of his time. His communication skills are top-notch, always keeping his staff, students, and parents updated on the latest school news. He's always willing to collaborate with fellow administrators with the goal of creating a strong school community. During his years at Anthony Wayne, Dave has brought many new initiatives and ideas to the school, creating a school culture that was focused on educating the whole child. It all started with AW's character education program, the 180 Days of Awesome, and branched out into monthly staff breakfasts, spirit days, student of the month, and community fundraisers. He's even been known to display his musical talents during band concerts, talent shows, and then end-of-year events when he plays the drums with the staff rock band. His personality lights up any room he walks into, and he's an uncanny ability to make people laugh. As you walk down the hallways of Anthony Wayne, you can see staff members that truly love what they do and students that are enthusiastic and engaged. This is because of Dave. Dave has created a learning environment that starts and ends with relationships. He's touched so many lives during his 27 years in education. He cares about every single person he meets. As his relationship with education ends, Dave's legacy will continue as new relationships are built throughout the halls of Anthony Wayne. He's made a lasting impact on the Anthony Wayne community, and he will be greatly missed. We wish Dave much happiness as he starts the next chapter of his life, trading in snowy winters here in New Jersey for warmer weather down in Naples, Florida with his family. Congratulations, Dave, on completing your phenomenal career, and thank you for many years of hard work and dedication in education. Now, I will admit, sometimes retirement statements, sometimes they're a little exaggerated, and sometimes, you know, people get a lot of credit at the time of retirement. In this particular case, this is, there's nothing in this statement that is an exaggeration. Dave is really an incredible human being. He will be sorely missed in this community. Everything that is written in here is absolutely true and not an exaggeration. He's one of the most exceptional people that I've met, and in terms of his leadership skills, they are truly unparalleled. So he's a class act. He did an unbelievable job at Anthony Wayne, and we wish him well, but we're certainly going to miss him.
Thank you very much, Dr. Toback. Just a moment, please.
We read them all.
Oh, okay.
We read them all.
All right, just wanted to make sure. Thank you very much. We'll be moving on to committee reports.
No, no, no. No, it was, it was the first one.
But Evie read that one.
Then we read them all.
Okay.
I thought I was not supposed to.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba. Okay, yes.
We, we, we read them all.
All right, thank you. Next, moving on to committee reports. Mr. Pavlak?
Facilities and Transportation Committee met this evening. Myself, Mr. Fatale, Ms. Tibbetts, Mr. Romaine, Mr. Skabitski, and of course, Mr. Moffett. We reviewed tonight's agenda. We talked about use of school facilities. We talked about some security projects that we have underway and some that will shortly be underway. We talked about the Ryerson roof replacement, and we will be changing out HVA C units at Ryerson as well as Pines Lake. We had an issue in front of JFK with a sinkhole that ended up not being our responsibility but the county's. Transportation-wise, we reviewed our transportation contracts, and these, what these contracts are, these contracts are for contracted services for buses. A lot of them are for special, special head. We, in the renewal of these budgets, we're seeing anywhere from a 20% to 30% increase in prices. It's totally out of control where it's going because of fuel and just because they can't get drivers either, the same situations that we're having. We have a couple new drivers that are coming onboard, a new mechanic, and again, we reviewed a lot of these contracts and the huge increase in fuel costs, which are creating some deficits, but hopefully we'll be able to work that out. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bubba?
Personnel Committee met tonight with myself, Mrs. Putup, Mr. Prasakos, our administrators, where Mrs. Clark, Mrs. Reichman, Dr. Toback. We reviewed the March 16 committee minutes. We also reviewed the tonight's agenda items. We discussed non-renewals of certificated staff members. We also went over the single-unit contracts and changes there, and we also went over the reduction in force, and that's the end.
Moving on to action on agenda.
Madam President, I move that we move the entire agenda to consent.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Bubba.
I have a question, though.
Certainly.
Dr. Toback, Mr. Moffett, I was wondering, because we did the presentation tonight with the budget, and we have the, we have the percentage down to 1.5, is there any way we could see at the budget hearing the breakdown of what 1% and 1.25% would be? Just so we have something to compare to, so that maybe we can, you know, if it, if it's feasible, I'm not even sure it is, but at this point in time, at least having something to compare to and where we'd be with each would be great. That's all.
Thank you. Okay. Do I, we're going to move all the agenda items together? Is there any discussion? Mrs. Kumar?
Just for the public, also as part of the budget presentation, if we could have the numbers, if you could just say them now for the, just changes. So you mentioned that the horizon was a 27% increase in our health insurance cost, but compared to last year, how does the state employment health benefits plan, like, save? And what percentages are those?
Any other discussion? Mrs. Wintick? Okay. All right, do I have a mover to pass all the agenda items?
I moved it.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call. Thank you.
Mrs. Wintick?
Yes.
Mr. Bubba?
I'll abstain on T. number 11, and yes to the rest, please.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mr. Pavlak?
Yes.
Mr. Prasakos?
No on item U2 and no on item U3, and yes to everything else.
Mr. Fatale?
Yes.
And Mrs. Putup?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next portion of the meeting is for public comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to this evening or at subsequent meetings under old business. Motion?
I'll move to open.
Mrs. Kumar?
I'll second.
Mr. Fatale? Thank you. We're open.
For the record, my name is Norman Robertson. I'm a Wayne resident. First, thank you all for your service to the community. It's not an easy job, and we do appreciate it. Just a couple of general comments. One of the things that happened, oh, I don't know, whatever it was, 10 days ago, with the State Department of Education sent out some changes to the health curriculum. And that really raises the question of what will happen for the balance of the year, because I know you're going to be subject to taking a look at a variety of curriculum. And I just wanted to say that I really do believe that parents and neighbors will be watching closely this year. Not that they haven't in the last couple of years, but they certainly have. They will want to know whether or not you're going to continue to ensure transparency with changes, perhaps, to how we post the minutes or the requests that we get under the Open Public Records Act. You might want to take a look at that. What will the board do with respect to recognizing a parent's right to be a part of input on controversial policies or curriculum changes? You took a step toward that today by, I think you reinstated the five-minute rule as opposed to the three-minute rule. Was that, is that correct, or is that not done yet? Oh, okay, oh, that wasn't on tonight's agenda? Oh, it was not, oh, okay. Well, I encourage you to do that, and that will be a step in the right direction. You may want to take a look at what your summer reading program will be, and take a careful look at it. Last year, there was considerable debate about that, and some people said that there was some history there that was not good history, and by that I mean not well-done. And we should really take a look at that, which leads to the point about what kind of American history and world history is going to be taught in our schools. That's something else that I know the public as a whole will take a very careful look at, and we hope that you will too. And then, of course, there is the health curriculum, and this is the teacher's guide, and I'm not going to quote from it, it's not needed yet at this point, it's being re-looked at and so forth in Trenton. But I encourage you to take a look at it if you need to know where you can find it. You can find the link to this site on Senator Chapezzi's Facebook page. She made comment about it after it came out, and she asked for it, and she got it, and it's very interesting, you know, because it involves whether or not the curriculum is age-appropriate, especially in the younger grades, in first and second grade. So then the question is going to be for the public, will the board be taking a stand on the age appropriateness?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, sir, that's your time.
Oh, that's three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Oh, and, okay.
You, you can come up again after everyone else who wants to speak has spoken. Thank you.
Dale Kavanaugh, lived in Wayne probably over, not probably, over 23 years. So truth, what is truth? Truth exists, truth is objective. For objective truth to exist, there needs to be a transcendent arbiter of truth. What objective truth is not is the personal opinions of individuals. We are entitled to our own opinion but not our own truth. Otherwise, we're the subject of the whims, opinions dictates, masquerading as truth of individuals or groups of individuals in a current moment. What is not true is the supposed COVID vaccines are effective in controlling the spread of COVID and preventing hospitalizations. This is clear for all to see through much evidence of those willing to objectively investigate, reason, and discern. Furthermore, the definition of vaccine has changed from the historical understanding of prevention to control spread. Masking also is, as a prevention tool, is also not true, is cosmic theater. There is not one study anywhere demonstrating the efficacy of masking. There are, however, 100 studies showing the harm it causes, especially to children, such as delayed speech and ability to recognize facial clues, confusion, fatigue, leading to infringement of full cognitive development function and confusion. We also miss out on possible indicators of emotional distress through facial expression. The strong expression of some government officials and some educational system for children to be vaccinated and masked comes from a spirit of dis- children to be vaccinated and masked comes from a spirit of deception. Our children are not in danger of COVID. According to CDC, complete recovery from COVID among school-aged children is nearly 100%. It's tragic that anyone lose any, any loved one for any reason. According to many health officials, the risk, I already said that meanwhile, fatalities due to suicides, overdoses, fentanyl poisoning, and I say fentanyl poisoning because it's not actually overdose. The kids aren't knowing that they're getting fentanyl in a lot of these cases, in these pills, or heroin, or whatever it may be. Overdoses, fentanyl poisoning are increasing rapidly and are the leading causes of death in these age groups. Our children are more likely to be a fatality in a car accident on the way to school than succumb to COVID. In addition to strong encouragement of our children to mask, infection is appalling seducation of students based on their COVID status, whether by masking or separation, is an egregious violation of their constitutional rights, most specifically the Fourth, Fourteenth, and First Amendments. It is a gross violation to inquire of anyone's health status, which has always been considered a private matter. Another non-truth we've heard in one meeting is that CRT is not SEL. The tenets of critical race theory is the ideology. SEL or TSEL is the delivery system, whether it be critical race theory, CRT, gender theory, or CSE. And SEL children are taught what to think rather than how to think for themselves through a problem. We were also told by a school board member that kids are struggling with the return citing one reason only. I too have a background in psychology and counseling, and what you learn very quickly is there rarely ever, if ever, one causation to one's emotional distress. Yes, return to school could be one reason for the child struggling. Then they come to school full of faceless people, they can't see smiles, they hear the USA is bad and racist, and it may be their fault, or they have no chance to succeed because the system will prevent them from succeeding in life.
I'm sorry, sir.
And then they are told that the earth will die in 10 to 12 years if we don't stop using fossil fuels for our cars or planes.
Sir, sir.
I heard you.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Almbach's service. I just figured I'd do it at the same time I get up here now. Second, I know the board has put a lot of effort into trying to figure out the public speaking policy, which is why it wasn't on tonight. I know it went back to committee. And as somebody who was at the board meetings, it used to end in the wee hours of the night, I, I respect that you want to get out of here, but I really, really have to say that I, I am against the idea of limiting public sessions to 90 minutes. If there is something that the folks in the public in town want to share with the board, there should be an ability for more than 18 people to do that if everyone were to take their five minutes. So I just put that out there, even though the phrasing of the policy is, you know, phrase so that you can extend the time. I just, I think that we want to give people the opportunity to speak whatever it is that they want to share with the board. I also really, really want to stress the importance of getting out accurate information. We hear a lot about, you know, the social and emotional challenges that people are facing, not only because of COVID, but, you know, if you've got high school students, they're stressing out about college, and there's all sorts of other reasons that people are stressed because of the war going on. You mentioned hiring more counselors. I commend you for that. And I think we need to make sure the public understands the difference between doing what we need to do to support the whole student in, in, in their learning as opposed to some other kind of sinister, whatever it is people are saying that are out there. They're two different things. Thank you.
Again, Norman Robertson, I will, I'll finish very quickly. We talked about the age appropriateness of the first and second grade, and I would just encourage you not to simply say, "Well, it's a state mandate. There's nothing we can do about it." There is something you can do about it, even if it's just to say that you don't agree or that you do agree, if that's, if you're so inclined. Also, we hear a lot about the opt-out rule. You know, and as a legislator, I understand that you try to put things together, but an opt-out is a cop-out. Remember that. An opt-out is a cop-out. If something is wrong, if it's inappropriate, it shouldn't make its way to our classrooms. Parents and neighbors will be watching. They'll be watching not what you say as much as what you do. So I suppose we should buckle up again this year. It's liable to be a bumpy ride. We were warned in 2020 and 2021 by events that happened that something radical, perhaps politically radical, was on its way to our classrooms, and parents and neighbors will watch that process very, very carefully, and they will want to know how you stand. Thank you. And again, thank you for your, for your service to the community.
All right, Dale Kavanaugh.
So repeating, so the kids come to school full of faceless people, they can't see smiles, they can't hear, they hear the USA is bad and racist, and it may be their fault, or they have no chance to succeed because the system will prevent them from succeeding in life. Then they are told that the earth will die 10 to 12 years if we don't stop using fossil fuels for our cars and planes. Oh, and by the way, it might be too late. Just getting up and going to school can cause several causations to emotional distress for our children. Then to really confuse them further, they may be told that if they don't, that if they don't feel good about themselves, they can change themselves to be one of 40 genders or so, and that will help them feel good about themselves or becoming someone different. Gender theology is not true. It is abusive and destructive. There's a biological and scientific fact that male and female are assigned at conception. It cannot rationally be argued otherwise, and is a tragedy to imply to a child otherwise. Sex is biology. Gender is grammatical. That is not to say that children suffering from gender dysphoria do not need our empathy and help. Read the many stories, many stories of people who have chemically or surgically transitioned to something other than who they were conceived as and live to horrifyingly regret their irreversible decisions. These are the tragic stories of many detransitioners. 80 to 95% of children who consider themselves transgender will naturally outgrow their transgender feelings by adulthood, given the chance. None of us are necessarily who we believe and/or feel we are. We are all created by Jesus Christ to be who He designed us to be. Therein lies the truth, transcendent, objective truth. All these things that I've covered help lead to the educational deficiencies we see demonstrated by lower test scores that were displayed in December's meeting. Remember what I said about the multiple causations. They are also being used to divide and separate children. The clues are all around us. What are we thinking? Thank you for your time.
Madam President, seeing no one else rise, I would like to close.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, sir.
No? Didn't you get up and done?
No, sir.
Two seconds, too late?
Yes, sir.
I can talk. Let's be honest about it. So I'm going to just say what I have to say anyway. My name's Craig Andruley. I live on Ridgeview Terrace.
I'm sorry.
I...
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw the second.
Thank you. Excuse me.
I didn't know I was going to cause a controversy.
Mr. Pavlak has withdrawn his motion. Is there a second?
There is a second.
There's a second.
Okay, thank you. So my name's Craig Andruley. I live in Ridge, Ridgeview Terrace. My daughter is one years old, I'm sorry, she's going into first grade. We decided not to send her to kindergarten. We didn't feel comfortable at all with the curriculum that we were seeing and a lot of the stuff going on. I grew up in Garfield. I came from Garfield, moved here, thought my kids were going to have a better, you know, experience when it came to school. Certainly didn't think I was going to have to deal with a lot of the stuff that I'm seeing. And when we had the meeting in the summer about looking at this curriculum and the K through second, one of the things that was said is you can opt out. When I said opting out means that we have to then, all the people that were in the room agreed that it shouldn't be taught. The people that weren't agreeing weren't there. Therefore, they're not represented. To force people to opt out is indoctrination. So how will we know if opting out? We would have to have a lesson plan every day to know that the kid wasn't being taught something by the teacher. So is that something that you are willing to do, which is provide lesson plans daily? Secondly, how will that affect their testing? Will they be having a different test from the other kids because they opted out? Or are they just going to be marked wrong on those questions? Or are they going to have to see those questions? Because if I don't agree as a parent, I certainly don't want them to read them and have multiple choice options for something that I don't agree that they should be taught. So there's a lot of questions that are left unanswered and certainly don't make any sense when you think about it in the scheme of things on how this is going to be handled properly. Again, it's not, I just think it's nuts to think that K through second should be learning about sexual orientation. I mean, it's, it blows my mind, but again, I'm open to at least entertaining what the options are if it is something that is put in place, because it doesn't seem like it would be seamless, it doesn't seem like it would be effective, and somehow, these kids are going to be introduced to it in one way or another. And I just want that to be my right and my privilege to teach my children about this stuff. So that's all I have. I appreciate your time.
No.
Anyone else? Madam President, I move to close public session.
I'll second.
Mr. Duffy seconded. Thank you.